Thank you. It was hard to break away from the presidential announcement, but we're all here right now, and I want to welcome you all. As I mentioned, I've read everything you wrote over the weekend. It was fascinating and important. So let me introduce you. The first witness on this panel is Jennifer Podko, who is the Senior Program Officer for the Migrant Rights and Justice Program at the Women's Refugee Commission. Prior to joining the Women's Refugee Commission, Ms. Podko represented immigrant children in Immigration and Family Court in Ayuda in Washington, D.C., and at Kids in Need of Defense. Next is Victor Manharez. Did I say that right? No. Close. You know, we're from Boston.
Manharez.
Manharez, all right. Thank you. The project director for the Center of Law and Human Behavior at the University of Texas at El Paso, who serves as the university's subject matter expert in issues relating to border security and the homeland security enterprise. Before joining the Center of Law and Behavior, he was the Associate Director for the National Center for Border Security and Immigration at the university, and also served the United States Border Patrol for more than 20 years. Wendy Young, just met outside, serves as President of Kids in Need of Defense, KIND, where she has served for more than seven years. Before joining KIND, Ms. Young served as Chief Counsel on Immigration Policy for the Senate Judiciary Subcommittee on Immigration, Border Security, and Refugees for Senator Edward Kennedy. Finally, Chris Rickard is a Policy Counsel at the American Civil Liberty Union's Washington Legislative Office, who does administrative and legislative advocacy on border immigration and voting issues. So you may not have heard, but we have this light system going off here. So I'm not a strict enforcer, but at some point, the hook comes. Why don't we start with Ms. Podko? Thank you.
Women's Refugee Commission greatly appreciates the opportunity to testify today. The WRC is a nonprofit research and advocacy organization that works to improve the lives and protect the rights of women and children displaced by conflict and crisis. Since 2012, there has been a large increase in the number of Central American women and children apprehended at the border with Mexico and the United States. The WRC is focused on identifying the issues that affect these migrants and working to improve the manner in which they are treated at all parts of their journey. Through my conversations with individuals at every step of their journey, I have had the opportunity to better understand the individuals who take this enormous risk to travel to the U.S. My testimony this morning, as well as the written testimony I submitted, is based on my research and accumulated knowledge. The proposed changes to the alien smuggling guidelines occurred amid significant changes in migration patterns at the U.S. southern border. The vast majority of the unaccompanied minors and family units who have arrived at the United States since 2012 are fleeing violence in three Central American countries: El Salvador, Guatemala, and Honduras. Pressures from gang recruiters, rampant killings, create a situation so hostile to children they are unable to even go to school. Law enforcement in certain regions of these countries is either under the control of gangs or so corrupt that they present a threat to the minors' well-being equal to that posed by the gangs. The rates of violence in these three countries are approaching unprecedented levels as the region grapples with growing instability, and the murder rates in the Northern Triangle are currently among the highest in the world. The mothers and children fleeing these circumstances are desperate. So are the parents and other family members who are sending them. In their desperation, they turn to smuggling organizations to make the journey to the United States. These smuggling organizations have many components. They rely on coyotes, who lead migrants on much of the journey from the Northern Triangle to the U.S.-Mexico border. The coyotes then hand the migrants over to foot guides, who are responsible for bringing the migrants through the final step of their journey across the border. Migrants often report they don't pay a coyote to show them the way north; they pay them because they know who to pay off during the journey. The foot guides used to cross the U.S.-Mexico border often work for a larger organization of smugglers. The people at the top of these organizations rarely see the migrants coming to the U.S. Smugglers often rely on children to be their foot guides, because a child can be repatriated quickly and can be smuggling again. One such child I interviewed told me after having been repeatedly caught and released back into Mexico, "I can't get out of the smuggling gang. It's too late." The U.S. rarely prosecutes these minors. However, in 2014, U.S. Customs and Border Protection piloted the juvenile referral process in an attempt to get these children out of the smuggling ring. U.S. CBP continues to refer these children for criminal prosecution. It is important to note that many of these children who make it to the United States have experienced violence sufficient to make them eligible for a claim and to receive asylum under both the U.N. Convention of Refugees and U.S. law. I make this point because although we all know there are smugglers out there capitalizing on and taking advantage of the most vulnerable people imaginable, they are also helping them access territorial protection. WRC is concerned that some of the proposed amendments might have the unattended effect of increasing the offense levels of family members who assist or pay for an unaccompanied minor to be smuggled into the U.S. Family members sending for their loved ones have begun to get caught up in the heated political debate around immigration. Judges, politicians, and border agents often cite to their actions in using smugglers to send for their children. These family members are desperate and doing the only thing they believe they can to keep their children safe. As a mother, I know I would do anything I needed to in order to ensure that my girls were safe. No parent should be punished for trying to protect their children. Make no mistake, leaders of criminal entities who abuse and mistreat women and children escaping danger should pay for their crimes. However, it is important to remember that those who are likely to be apprehended in the United States are not the masterminds of these organizations. They are the lowest-hanging fruit, and some of them may be victims themselves. The current lack of effective refugee protection is forcing many to lose hope and undertake dangerous journeys. The WRC believes comprehensive immigration reform, a more protective refugee processing system, and increased security in the home countries is what will eventually stop smugglers from preying upon vulnerable children. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for the honor to present testimony regarding the proposed
amendment to revise the Alien Smuggling Guideline. I think this is an important topic, not only for the protection of those who are being smuggled, but I believe that the change in dynamics of alien smuggling dictates that the criminal justice system takes a closer look at this crime. As you stated, I retired as the Chief Patrol Agent of the Tucson Sector Border Patrol, so I come to you with the perspective of a homeland security practitioner, and someone that's actually had the opportunity to conduct research at a university regarding this topic and other topics that are relevant to the Homeland Security enterprise. As you understand, the difference between alien smuggling and human trafficking are different, but unfortunately, in the last several years, the differences between the two are getting smaller and smaller. They're both now starting to include exploitation and violence towards the people that are being smuggled. Early in my career as a Border Patrol Agent, I saw smuggling as multiple mom-and-cop operations, really with not much organizational structure. That's clearly not the case now, and that mom-and-cop operations are very few if they exist at all. They've been replaced by organizations that are structured enterprises and have long tonics that reach far into Mexico, Central America, and the United States. It's clear that human smuggling in the United States, it's much more like organized crime, and the organizations have become very specialized in their trade and the territory that they operate in. Now, I'm often asked about the involvement of drug cartels with alien smuggling. At this point, there's really not much involvement, other than generally that they're guardians of certain blazes, where they dictate where alien smugglers or human smugglers will move people, and they'll pay a fee. Now, this fee gets passed on to the individual that's being smuggled. There's nothing that happens on the border that's free. There's always a cost. It's either a financial cost or a cost to the body. Now, unfortunately, many of these times that are -- or many times these locations are dictated are areas that are dangerous and very remote, and which causes alien smuggling fees to increase substantially. In fact, in the last 10 years, they've increased substantially, from something that was, I wouldn't say very affordable, but things that were below $1,000. That could range, depending on a Mexican national, Central American, or Far East, it could be anywhere from $1,900 up to about $45,000 for someone in the Far East. Now, smugglers have become more violent towards the individuals being smuggled, in most cases to extort additional funds. Often, the ones that are being smuggled are held against their will until smuggling fees are paid. This often resembles a kidnapping offense. In addition, there's an unmistakable trend that increasing sexual violence is being committed against the individuals that are being smuggled, both women and children. Now, the nature of alien smuggling, or the nature of smuggling aliens, has changed significantly over the years. It had been pretty routine that most people arrested on the southern border, 97.5% were Mexican nationals, and about 2% were from Central America, and from those, 2% they were from the big three countries: Honduras, El Salvador, and Guatemala.
Just make sure you keep your voice up so they can hear it on the streaming. Thank you.
This is no longer the case. For example, well, this is no longer the case. For example, the last three years, U.S. Customs of Border Protection reported that 44% of all those arrested on the southern border of the United States were from Central American countries. In 2014, there were more non-Mexican nationals arrested than Mexican nationals, and this hasn't occurred in several decades. This simply wasn't the case before. In addition, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security has reported large increases of unaccompanied children, and the smugglers have adjusted and now exploiting weaknesses in the systems, in the governmental systems, and how they handle these children. They quickly understood there was no need to smuggle unaccompanied minors through complex or covert manners. In many places in Brownsville, they would point to a Border Patrol agent, or if they crossed successfully undetected, they would drive them to a Border Patrol station and tell them to ring the doorbell. What that provided to the smuggler was the opportunity to charge higher prices, because now they can guarantee the safe passage. The other question that I'm often asked is, is there a nexus to alien smugglers and terrorists? That's obviously a fear that occurs in the U.S. and Mexico, often exploited by the media. But I will tell you, as a Chief Patrol Agent in Tucson, there was no evidence ever to support that. There's no current evidence to support that now, but I believe there continues to be a fear of those responsible for our security efforts.
Thank you very much. Ms. Young?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to testify on behalf of Kids in Need of Defense or KIND, and to share our views on the situation of unaccompanied immigrant and refugee children seeking protection in the United States and their intersection with the growing and increasingly problematic phenomenon of smuggling. KIND was founded by the Microsoft Corporation and UNHCR Special Envoy Angelina Jolie in 2008 to ensure that unaccompanied immigrant and refugee children are provided pro bono legal representation in their immigration proceedings. We are also increasingly doing work in the Northern Triangle of Central America and Mexico to address the root causes of child migration in the region and to assist children who are returning home because they've been deported or voluntarily returning. We've also implemented an assessment on sexual and gender-based violence against migrant children, particularly girls. KIND has assisted more than 8,500 children and trained over 11,000 volunteer attorneys in our seven years of operation, so we're very familiar with the situation of these very vulnerable children. More than 100,000 children have come alone from Central America in the last two years, far outpacing previous years, many escaping the pervasive and growing gang and narco-trafficking related violence in the region. The crisis began in fall 2011, when the number of children coming alone to the United States started to increase significantly, and peaked in 2014, when more than 68,000 unaccompanied children were apprehended at the U.S. southern border, a nearly tenfold increase from the historical norm. The numbers have been rising again in comparison to the same time last year. Starting in August 2015, we saw the numbers significantly increase. They dropped a bit in January, but they're now increasing again, which tells us that this crisis is not over. Until recently, these children had little or no way of gaining access to the U.S. protection system from their home country or from the region. As a result, the many children who feared for their lives, or the families who feared for their children, felt they had no choice but to find a way for the child to come to the United States. In the case of children traveling without a parent or legal guardian, this has meant resorting to smugglers, who they are forced to rely on, to lead them hundreds or thousands of miles to cross into the U.S. Desperate situations cause people to do desperate things. Children have been specifically targeted by the gangs and criminal rings that terrorize large parts of the Northern Triangle. The gangs attempt to forcibly recruit children, especially those in their early teens, but sometimes as young as kindergarten age. Girls are forced to become "girlfriends" of gang members, which in reality are non-consensual relationships that result in rape by one or more gang members. If children resist gang recruitment, they and their families face kidnapping, murder, and rape. The weak governments that characterize the region are unable or unwilling to control that violence. As a result, according to the U.N. Refugee Agency, at least 58% of children arriving at the U.S. border have been forcibly displaced and are potentially in need of international protection. Families do not take the decision to send their child with a stranger to the U.S. lightly. They are often terrified for their child, but as one mother put it, "I would rather my child die on the journey to the United States than die on my doorstep." A heartbreaking calculation, but this is the reality for many families in Central America. KIND recently conducted an intake for a three-year-old, whose family sent him to the U.S. because his family was receiving threats from a gang that they would kill the little boy. The police refused to help. Smugglers are taking advantage of vulnerable families and children and facilitating their travel to the U.S. Smuggling rings are highly organized and closely associated with the same criminal cartels that are generating the violence in countries of origin. They prey upon their victims and exploit them even further by charging high fees to transport children as young as two years old to the U.S. border. Children referred to KIND have told us about smugglers who denied children the food they were paid to provide, numerous instances of sexual assault and rape of both boys and girls, and other abuses. Smugglers have also at times sold the children they agreed to transport to local criminal elements, who then hold the children and demand ransom from their families to release them. As border controls in the U.S. have tightened in recent years, smugglers have changed the routes to more remote and more dangerous passages that put the children they are charged with transporting at even greater risk. KIND has been deeply concerned that the U.S. has addressed this surge in child migration using primarily a border enforcement approach that fails to acknowledge the need to protect vulnerable individuals from the violence in their countries. KIND is also concerned that the greater the law enforcement approach that targets migrants, the further underground they will go, and the more vulnerable they will become. Trafficking victims and those in situations in which smuggling has turned into trafficking are particularly at risk of harm. More effective than a focus on border enforcement is to ensure that all children in adversarial proceedings are afforded counsel. Upon release from ORR custody, approximately half of unaccompanied children appear in immigration court without representation. This is fundamentally unfair and contradicts the U.S. principle of due process and respect for the rule of law. The answer to this crisis is to address the root causes in the sending region and to restore order to the migration so that people can safely access protection in the United States. We must prioritize a protection-oriented approach to the child migration issue that upholds our nation's commitment to the most vulnerable. There are no easy answers, but with protection as our guiding light, we will better serve the children who are coming to the U.S. to seek safety. As children, they deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Judge Suarez, thank you and your colleagues on behalf of the ACLU for this opportunity to testify today. The ACLU's top organizational priority is currently de-incarceration, and my testimony aims to connect reentry to this vital effort. We also stand up for immigrants' rights with special attention to family separation and due process in deportation. We commend the sentencing commission for its important attention to reducing excessive sentences under the current reentry guideline, a need which judges' sentences now reflect and we wholeheartedly support. I will, however, highlight two concerns about the proposed amendment from our written testimony. First, the commission should reject the proposal's premise that after reform, the average guideline minimum sentence must remain the same. There is no zero-sum mandate requiring sentences at the lowest end of the spectrum to increase for persons without aggravating factors in order to correct disproportionate sentences driven by features of the current guideline, like 16-level enhancements. The commission data presented alarmingly shows that for individuals in the least serious category, with no current criminal conviction enhancements or upward departures, the average guideline minimum sentence increases from one to six months without justification provided beyond mathematical parity. Second, we agree with the proposal's focus on serious, recent criminal convictions that come after reentry. We recommend, however, that the commission deemphasize the proposed increases in sentence severity based on old convictions preceding the most recent date of reentry, and not include a departure for prior deportations, many of which lack due process. The proposed amendment's use of an individual's first entry date, which can be decades ago in a broken immigration system that has sent anything but consistent messages to reentrance, and has had no consistency district to district about who is prosecuted for reentry. To use an old date for counting convictions that enhance a sentence is at odds with the correct effort to focus on recency, as best informing society's interest in punishing reentries. Our larger purpose is to urge the commission to consider this guideline in full context. As part of its mandate, the commission is tasked with assessing how sentencing affects the federal prison population. Since 2007 especially, reentry sentences have been a leading driver of Bureau of Prisons overcrowding, with immigrants housed in substandard, privatized criminal alien requirement facilities that were the subject of a 2014 ACLU report titled Warehouse and Forgotten. There has been a massive increase in total criminal immigration prosecutions, from under 10,000 in 1997 to 40,000 in 2007, and almost 100,000 in 2013. This includes a doubling of the proportion of cases involving individuals with no felony convictions. Keeping average sentences steady would fail to address the devastating impact these convictions have had on individuals who do not meet any national security or public safety priorities. Judge Robert Brack in Las Cruces, New Mexico, told The Wall Street Journal in 2013, quote, "Every day I see people who would never have been considered as criminal defendants two years ago. It's just a completely different profile." That profile is borne out by the commission's statistics. Half of those sentenced for illegal reentry had at least one child living in the United States. As a whole, sentenced reentrants have an average and median age of 17 at the time of initial entry, while the average offender age is 36. Many persons sentenced under the guideline across the country therefore have deep family and other ties to which they returned. The Department of Homeland Security's Office of Inspector General issued a critical report last year concluding that, quote, "Border Patrol is not fully and accurately measuring border prosecution's effect on deterring aliens from entering and reentering the country illegally." A University of Arizona study tracking 1,200 people deported found that there is no statistically significant reentry difference for those who went through prosecution. The Migration Policy Institute has noted that for border crossers with strong family and/or economic ties, quote, "Even high consequence enforcement strategies," i.e. criminal prosecutions, "may not deter them from making future attempts." And I would add a citation to Mr. Durbin, who echoed that point in speaking about the western district of Texas. "Within this context, we strongly urge the commission not to feel bound by a seesaw approach in reducing the injustice of excessive enhancements by increasing base offense levels, and also to revise the proposal to more accurately reflect its animating principle of focusing on serious, recent convictions after reentry, not outdated criminal and immigration history." Thank you again for inviting the ACLU. Thank you. Any questions? So I was gonna start with, all the folks who understand this, if we're talking about alien smuggling, I understand how horrible it is for the women and children. Had the nature of the smugglers changed over time? In other words, are they more violent? Are they the nice guy who's trying to help somebody over the border, or are they really these horrible people who stick them in stash houses and they get raped? I mean, has it changed so that we should increase that penalty?
Yes, ma'am, it has increased and changed significantly over the last 10 years. For example, I remember a time in Naco, Arizona, where there were these Polish nationals that were arrested, and it was part of the interview process, and they asked them, "How did you pick Arizona? Because we saw it on TV." And it was like a tourist, the gateway to the southwest. He goes, "The people were really nice. They offered them a package deal. They were real nice." That dynamic has changed. There's nothing nice about these smugglers. The people that are smuggled will tell you that. Although they make a contractual agreement to be smuggled, they fear these people. So the dynamic has significantly changed. There's a genuine fear.
You said it changed, so that shift happened 10 years ago, would you say?
No, I would say that within the last 10 years, ma'am.
Within the last 10 years?
Yes, ma'am.
Isn't there then a way to address what I would call the subsequent bad conduct from the conduct of simply bringing the person over? In other words, if you simply bring the person over, bad enough, bring the person over, that's punishment X. If, in fact, you sexually assault them, you do all the things at the parade of horrors, which I think happens, and that's what you're telling us, it happens, that's a separate harm, isn't it? I mean, that's a harm that can be addressed separately with a severe penalty or an increased penalty. The question I have is, why are we increasing the penalty for X when what we're concerned about is Y, unless there's some evidence showing that the people who commit X understand that Y is going to occur and facilitate it? I understand you won't have Y without X, but that doesn't mean that there's a causal relationship between the two that we ought to address. That was one point. The other thing, I wondered about this unaccompanied minor, and I wanted to find out your experience in this, is that, as it's written now, we talk about increasing the penalty for an unaccompanied by a minor's parent or grandparent. And you raised the question, well, what about other members of the family bringing the person over? First, is that, does that occur? And does that occur with such frequency that we ought to address it? And secondly, there is an argument that that person stands in a different relationship from the type of person that we're trying to address here when we talk about unaccompanied. So I don't know how you want to respond to it, but those are my thoughts.
Sure, I have a few thoughts. I mean, I think the first thing is, the crimes that we're talking about that are happening to the migrants, particularly those that I've spoken with, are often occurring in Mexico. They're not necessarily occurring once the person has crossed into the U.S. And as Mr. Manahares has said, you know, oftentimes, especially with these refugee flows of late, people are being dropped off, dropped off and told, "Go find a border agent. Go." So there's no time for these crimes to be happening here after the smuggling has happened. The most egregious acts we're seeing are in Mexico. Mexico has stepped up a new office to deal with crimes against migrants in Mexico. It seems like that would be the appropriate place, and that's where the prosecution would happen, and the people who are bringing them here are not necessarily engaging in those behaviors. In the U.S., would not necessarily be subject to any of these enhancements anyway. They wouldn't be prosecuted for these, because they're not happening in the U.S. And then to your second point, I think the confusion is, you know, immigration law has a definition through the Homeland Security Act of an unaccompanied child, which is a little different here. And so I think, you know, what does that mean? I think we would kind of have to unpack, what does that mean? What we are often seeing is that children are traveling with family members who aren't necessarily a parent or legal guardian. We're seeing a lot of grandparents who are bringing their children, because the parent may have been here on temporary protected status for years, so the parent is already here. A lot of siblings are traveling together, where one sibling may be an adult and another one is a child. We're seeing cousins and aunts and uncles traveling together. So unaccompanied, it's difficult to describe in kind of the sense that we're thinking of and under the Homeland Security Act, which is just...
Wouldn't it be, if we simply said family member, unaccompanied by a family member? Now, I know there are non-family members who are like family members. I understand that, but I think there's no end to it if you have a loose definition, and from a due process point of view, it's extremely difficult. Even from a judge's point of view, try to figure out, well, he's like my mother, or like my mother, like my father, like my brother, like my sister, there's no answer to that. I mean, yes, there's some lengthy hearing you could have that maybe will give you an idea, but judges aren't any better at that than anybody else, probably worse. So, you know, why isn't your problem addressed, at least in part? Because grandparents are already in here, but at least addressed by, say, no family member, unaccompanied by a family member? Doesn't that deal with it?
So...
I mean, what do you think? I mean, you've had the experience. Are cousins, older brothers, older sisters, bringing people over?
They are accompanied down there, and we come up with a distinction. Are they smuggling, or are they simply accompanying them to cross? And what we found in, not only in the research, but in my practical experience, is, you know, they will hire a guide. They'll hire a guide, a series of guides, in fact, that'll take them to travels through Mexico, up to the immediate border area, kind of sold like a commodity to other smugglers that'll bring them across. Now, that dynamic is particularly interesting in the South Texas area, where the flood of other Mexican nationals has been occurring. And that dynamic's slightly different than, let's say, in Arizona or in New Mexico, where they're actually crossing the river and literally being driven to a border patrol station, pointed at the doors, and ring the doorbell. And they may be family members, with the idea of, okay, we're all gonna be placed together, we're brothers and sisters and uncles. So that certainly does happen, yes, sir.
But we're not gonna catch those people, because they're staying on the other side of the border, so of the ones that are coming over, we're getting. All right, so right now, the base fence level puts them at, I think, at 12 before you take into account other things, which, you know, 10 to 16 months if you don't have other criminal history, and we're proposing...
history. And we're proposing, asking whether it makes sense to move it to 21 to 27 months, essentially dramatically increasing, doubling the penalty. So, from what you're seeing, is the smuggler who makes it across the border, it's not the Mexico person, you know, the person who's doing these horrible things in Mexico, that comes across, does he merit a substantial increase in the kind of penalty he's getting?
Yes.
Because...
Again, the act of smuggling in the past was a mom and pop. It was relatively slave. There was a level of comfort on that. And now, it's so organized, there's really a disregard for that commodity to bring. That commodity are people. Now, the smuggling, the levels of criminal activity in terms of smuggling that was discussed in one of the previous panels is down, and migrant deaths and things of that nature, certainly down. But the violence is not. There's violence that's occurring to the women, particularly women and children.
I understand that, but I think that is a separate concern. But anyway, let me ask you this. Do we have any information on the age of these people who are bringing the people over? That is, do we know, are they 18, 19-year-olds, or are they older? Do we have any anecdotaly, or...
They're typically older. They're not minors. They're typically 18, 19, 20. But again, what you have to remember, in a smuggling cycle, there are smugglers that have, or guides have different portions of that cycle. One's responsible to bring them to a certain point, who's handed over to another person, to be routed over to another point. And that can happen all the way in interior Mexico, all the way to destinations interior of the United States. So, typically, the age is of an adult age.
How many of those people that are on that last leg, the folks that are likely to get caught once they're on the other side of the border, how many of those folks are in some way victims themselves, or caught up in coercive kinds of situations where they take on this task? Do you have a sense of what kind of percentage we're looking at of those folks, any of you?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to disagree with my colleague about that it should be increased for the people who are bringing over, because in my experience, it's younger people, and it is that these organizations specifically are targeting minor children because a minor is able to withdraw their application for admission at the border, which means if you're a Mexican child and you're screened by Customs and Border Protection, you're allowed to withdraw your application, say, "Never mind. I'll turn around and go home. We can pretend this never happened. I don't get put into removal proceedings, and I might not get prosecuted because I'm a child." So, these smuggling organizations are taking advantage of this and saying...
What about the adults? Let's assume we're not dealing with the juveniles who rarely get prosecuted. Are the adults, the typical adult, worse? And just what you're seeing, are they rather than the mom and pop?
I guess my point is they're specifically using children for that last point of it because the children are not going to get prosecuted. And, you know, it's easier to coerce and force a child to do that work and to victimize the child and pressure them into doing this work. And for the smuggling units, you know, there's 100 other Mexican, you know, 16 and 17-year-olds who are able to easily either convince or coerce them to do this work. So, it's no big deal if that kid gets prosecuted, or no big deal if that kid ends up in detention.
Just to add to this, you know, and I understand the jurisdiction of the commission, but in some ways, I think by looking just at the person who's actually doing that final physical, getting the child to the border, it's a very narrow slice of what's happening. There's really transnational, organized criminal rings behind all of this that are organizing it. So, if you really want to crack down on the smuggling, you really have to go after the people that are organizing it. And the connections to what's happening in the home countries can't be ignored either. So, I think in many ways, the solution to this problem is really not to focus on that one person who actually affects the final...
That's the person who's in front of us. I mean, you know...
I know, and I understand your frustration.
But I don't, I'm sure you're right. I mean, but that's not what we do. What we do is, I'm not saying we do wrong things, I hope we don't do too many of them, but we have to focus on that person who the judge has to sentence. And the question is, who is that person sentencing? And I take it a step further. If we increase the sentence, is that either, one, going to deter this type of conduct, which I don't hear anybody saying it is, or, two, appropriately punish the person who is actually doing it? And what I'm concerned about is if people who are either minors or 18, 19-year-olds, you know, really young kids, I know they make a choice, but are being, as Commissioner Barca points out, maybe themselves are being forced to do this sort of thing. Are we accomplishing anything, anything other than ratcheting up sentences, which we can do or not? Are we accomplishing anything? That's what my question is.
I guess I would say, if the goal is deterrence, to prevent this from happening, I doubt that ratcheting up the sentences will have much impact.
That's not the only goal, but addressing everything.
But if it's a worse person than we used to have, do they merit more punishment? What would you say?
Yes, but I think you have to go to looking at exactly what activities that person's engaged in besides the smuggling.
But they're also playing a role in an organization that has increased risks. So, let's say that before, a person may have been the cousin of the mom and pop organization that Mr. Manahares mentioned, but now, he's playing a crucial role in an organization that is indeed putting these people at risk and is resulting in increased harms and rapes and all these things. Isn't that worse? The fact that that person is playing a critical role, doesn't that need to be accounted for in some way?
I think the reality is, though, that the people who are the foot guides, kind of the last level, they don't have much affiliation beyond the, here's money, you know, take this group of people this way with the kind of the mastermind of it, the, you know, is there any sort of connection to the drug trade, or the, you know, they're not in those conversations. They're at the conversation of, you know, here's X amount of dollars to take these people. You're just taking them right here, you know, and we'll see you again next week. And that's it.
Would they be aware of the previous acts of, I mean, what's the kind of general sense of knowledge that the person at the last end of this cycle would have of what takes place before? Like, do they have any awareness, knowledge? Would it be more likely that they'd know that, well, this, I'm part of this organization, and I know they do these things in Mexico, or I know these other things are happening with other folks? What would you say the kind of, if we had to pick a prototypical, high percentage, the person that's on that last leg, how much knowledge does that average person have?
It's pretty high, ma'am. And what I submit to you as evidence is, if you were to take a trip down to the Ho'oponopono Nation, southwest of Arizona, you go Mesquite Bushes, where they'll bring up the alien groups that get smuggled up there, there's these bushes that, quite honestly, are disgusting because they have women's underwear, undergarments hanging on the deal as trophies. And that's often on that. So, that is pretty predominant. To sit here and give you a percentage that happens 50%, 60%, I simply couldn't do that. But it's often enough that it's very identifiable.
Would it be easy to prove if it was a requirement that the defendant had to have that knowledge? Do you think that would be something that would be difficult for the government to bring in evidence of?
Yes, ma'am, it would be very difficult. Just like when you look at the elements of alien smuggling, you know, trying to say, did the smuggler know? You ask the material witness on that. You know, sometimes there's the fear, there's the whole idea, it goes, well, I guess so. Why'd you pay him? So, I think it would be very difficult. I would like to kind of backtrack on one spot and make clear that, I've heard a couple times outside, that the last leg of smuggling, bringing them across the border, that is not the last leg of smuggling across the border. That is a guide, bringing them out there to bring them to an interior destination to the United States. Delivery of that person to that destination is the last act of smuggling. And that is not typically a juvenile. That is an assault.
And is it fair to say that that person, taking them from the border to the stash house, not crossing the border, is a higher-level person in the organization than the one who crosses the border and takes the high risk?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Manahares, you talk about the change in the nature of the organization and how they're more complex. I'm curious whether, at the same time these organizations have increased in sophistication, has the number of aliens smuggled changed? And I ask because, as you know, we have these significant enhancements based on number of aliens. So, we started at 12, but you do get the plus three if it's 6 to 24. So, are you seeing any reduction in the number of aliens that are being moved by these organizations, such that that SOC, that plus three is applying with less frequency? Are they becoming sophisticated and traveling with one or two here and there, such that you're not able to get the enhancement for 6 to 24 aliens?
Yes, ma'am. What's amazing about these organizations, how quickly they adjust.
They apparently read our guidelines.
They do.
But you do, I mean, is there data you can show that in these organizations, when the defendant's apprehended, they have fewer defendants, fewer matwits with them than they used to? Is that, is there data to support that?
That is something actually, HSI actually carries.
Can you provide that kind of data that shows us over time, from the time we increased the base offense level till now, how the number of aliens has changed over time? Because if the number of aliens has dropped, I mean, this guideline is not the same guideline. It's not operating in the same way it was in 2006.
Absolutely, ma'am. That is pretty clear and distinct, so I will find out.
So, let me, I just ask, Ms. Rick, I don't want to ignore you because I very much appreciate your comments about over-incarceration. I just want to know whether the ACLU has a particular point of view on this alien smuggling operation, where you think it should be going?
We share Ms. Young's and Ms. Podco's concerns about where the root causes of this smuggling are taking...
You just need to speak up a little to catch the mic.
We share Ms. Young and Ms. Podco's concerns about where the root causes of the smuggling operations are taking place. We also think that some of the mens rea issues here are very pertinent in terms of proving up some of the knowledge. We haven't submitted particular comments on that, but we'll be happy to follow up with the commission.
Anything, anybody else? All right. Well, thank you. We're going to break for lunch, and we'll be back here in an hour to talk about animal sightings. Thank you.